All right, we're live. Welcome to the Riverside Brookfield High School Virtual Board Meeting due COVID-19. We're doing this with a Zoom platform. Let's do a call to order. Mary Ann, you're on mute.
Okay, Mr. Durkin, Ms. Ruska.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Ms. Sierra.
Here.
Ms. Towner. Ms. Salas.
Here.
Mr. Smithing.
Here. All right, we're going to do a quick pledge of allegiance. The flag is behind me. Stand and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Gina, you guys start us out. Oh, I don't want to step in the way. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands.
One nation, under God. Individual.
Invisible, with liberty, justice for all.
You did a great job. Thank you very much. All right, so let's go to, we call it order, pledge, we roll call visitor statements. So at this time, the Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. For this meeting, comments need to be submitted via email to the school board, rb@rbhs208.net with visitor comments in the subject line. Comments will be read during the allotted time during the meeting. Please note that the Board of Education will not answer questions at this time. Kevin's going to read the comment we got.
We received one visitor comment, and this was a public comment from Mr. James Baum. And Mr. James Baum submitted the following. I'll read it. COVID-19 has dramatically changed the world in many ways. The changes we are experiencing are negative. No hanging out with friends or extended family. We have to wear masks everywhere we go, and some people are losing loved ones. There are also positive changes that have occurred: more family time, less stress from overfilled schedules, better hand washing, and uplifting music being created publicly in neighborhoods. With this in mind, it seems to be, it seems to me that a positive change has occurred in the way Illinois issues grades for its students. But in making the change, we've highlighted an issue that American education system needs to address. The state lockdown has given our students much more freedom. In a world where education effectively inspires the pursuit of knowledge and creativity, this lockdown would be one of the most productive learning periods in our students' lives. However, that isn't the world our students have experienced, and many of our students are still struggling. In my own classrooms, 56 of my 199 students have not engaged in a remote learning curriculum, and many of these students are top-notch musicians. In times like these, every musician I know is creating, so it's disheartening that some of my students, especially those continuing music study in college, have opted to not create. It grieves me to accept partial ownership of this problem. However, I believe there is a systemic failure at play in my online classroom. The American education system has many flaws that contribute to this lack of motivation in students, but chief among those flaws is our grading system. Many teachers use grades as a means of coercion and punishment, which may work for short-term outcomes and classroom management, but they actually have a detrimental effect to long-term learning, perseverance, grit, creativity, and intrinsic motivation. This is such a large problem that in this moment of crisis, ISB had to mandate non-punitive grading throughout the entire state, throwing many teachers into a panic while liberating students from the oppressive grading schemes. Think about what it means that the ISB felt the need to protect students from punitive grading. I believe we need this non-punitive policy to remain intact as the new normal. Our world is ever more rapidly changing through technology and innovation. Teachers cannot possibly know what the world will look like or need when our students graduate college. If we can't inspire a thirst for knowledge and creativity, we are failing them. Sadly, this is the case for many of our students who, when given the time and freedom to create and seek knowledge as they please, frequently complain of boredom while occupying their time with too much leisure activity. No punitive grading is only one part of the solution to this complex problem. I know our leadership team, administration, and many teachers have been working hard to make the policy work for our building, and I hope they continue to seek out best practice for grading and engage our feeder schools to do the same. Along with that, I hope we strongly consider the motivation behind ISB's mandated grading policy and look at the impact it might have if we let it become the new normal. Thank you sincerely, Mr. James Baum, Riverside Brookfield High School instrumental music teacher. And that was the only visitor comment we received at 6:30.
All right, thank you, Mr. Baum. I always encourage that, especially from residents and staff. Let's go to discussion information items, FOIA request.
We didn't have any.
Well, that's a positive. RBH has COVID-19 information plan.
Obviously, it's been a very interesting past four weeks. This officially came down on March 14th. I believe that was a Friday when we've received official notification from the governor about the initial closing. As previously stated, we are, we were ahead of the curve a little bit in that we had previously decided to close school through Monday, April 6th. And eventually, the governor went and extended that through April 30th. So I'm going to go in a couple, in an order of a couple things here, and then I'll open it up for discussion. E-learning, we are in our fourth week of e-learning. The schedule and the grading model that will be implemented are posted on the website. And my only point to this, and I will let Dr. Freitas touch on this also, is students and parents, please remember, in order to receive a passing credit for second semester, a student must complete at least 60% of their assignments or assessments assigned during this remote learning period. Dr. Freitas, would you like to add some additional stuff on that, please?
I would. Firstly, good evening, board members and admin team and to the community. I hope everyone's doing well, and I want to thank everyone who's out there working, keeping us safe. We believe in multiple opportunities. Our grading updates give students the opportunity to earn credit to redo assignment because we believe in students mastering what they're learning. We want them to understand. You know, we don't want them to fail. But I'm going to briefly talk about the three possible scenarios for the Semester Two grade that was previously shared. So in the scenario one, for the final Semester Two grade, a student can earn the same grade as third quarter if they do 60% of the lessons and get a 60% or more. A student can earn a higher grade if they do 60% of the lessons, get 60% on each assignment, and when they average third and fourth quarter, you know, it's a lot higher. They get the higher grade. And then lastly, a student can possibly earn an incomplete. But an incomplete is not a failure. An incomplete is an opportunity to demonstrate mastery. Our grading system is really based on the opportunity and the needs for the students, and it has been evolving in working with teachers, with the district administration. I want the community to understand the students that we don't want to be punitive. We believe in support. Our mission is to get students to and through. That's what excites us. But at the same time, our duty is for us to teach, to learn, and to make sure that we have the skills necessary for colleges and career. And how do students do that? By turning in the assignments, by doing the work, doing the assessments. Remember, students, remember board members and the community. Two scenarios: the students get a grade and get the credit for grade promotion and graduation, and in one scenario of the grading system, they get an incomplete, which means an opportunity to pass. It is not a failure.
And while that's not a failure, parents and people that are watching, your son or daughter would need to repeat the class, or they would be withheld from graduation or from being moved up to the next grade level until they submitted the work to show at least 60% of the work from the remote learning to show that they've mastered or demonstrated some mastery of that content. I think that's been some confusion out there. I think there's some individuals that may think, hey, I got an A third quarter. I'm going to get an A for the semester. The only way that you can achieve that A is by at least completing 60% of the assignments that were issued during this remote learning. So please continue to be engaged in the e-learning so that you can receive full credit.
I think that particularly speaks to all the seniors out there, correct?
It speaks to everybody, but the last thing the board would want to have happen is have a bunch of seniors that thought they were done at the end of third quarter. So unless some additional guidance is issued by the state, I think it's important for everybody to please engage in the e-learning.
And boss, I just wanted to quickly just add a final comment. Students, parents, if you're having any sort of difficulty in engaging, you know, teachers via email, via Zoom, or having a hard time accessing the curriculum, guys, let us know. We are all working. We are all available for you because we are committed to getting you to and through. We want to celebrate and make sure everyone passes. But again, students and community, remember, guys, we need the work done so we can support you best for your future planning.
Okay, I'd like to move on to the next piece. Mr. Smithing, if you could maybe hit mute real quick.
Right, so that's consent agenda.
I still have some other stuff to go through.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move through. You've asked us to raise your hand, so if you can have that panel up, there's a hand that's raised. So because this is new to us, before we move to new subjects, please check that and make sure somebody might have a comment.
Yeah, I wasn't done with the update. So Gina, we'll get to here in a second, okay? The second thing under the COVID plan is the biggest, next to continuity of learning, the second biggest thing from the state was student nutrition and making sure we were providing lunches both for our free and reduced lunch population, but also anybody that needed lunch. Ms. Matana sent out a survey last week to all families, and we did receive about 50 additional families or students that will be picking up lunch. So if anybody watching this is in need of a lunch during the school closure, you do not need to be qualified for free and reduced lunch. You still can get a free lunch. Please email Ms. Matana or contact Ms. Matana in the business office, and she will work to get your name on that list so that you can pick up free lunch. Some other items in regards to communication, there is a modified security staff that is on call in the building for a few hours a day in the event of an emergency. A staff member or a student in the event of an emergency needed to get something from their locker to complete an e-learning assignment, or they needed something that was very important. We're not, there is not open access to the building, but you can email Mr. Dugetti or Mr. Mannan so they can notify security and give you an appropriate time to come and escort you to pick up something if you should need it, and that goes to staff as well. Also on the webpage, we have a dedicated COVID-19 page, but there is information about Chromebook repair. Obviously, we're stressing the e-learning and the remote learning. So in the event you're having issues with your Chromebook, there is an hour on Mondays and Wednesdays and Fridays where you can drop off a Chromebook and do a Chromebook exchange, and we can, IT person will be here to problem solve with you if you're having any issues with your Chromebooks. In regards to community support, there was a great article this week in The Landmark just about all the different things that local schools are doing. You saw that our science department donated goggles and gloves to McNeil. We have Mr. Weisar who's working with our 3D printer and another family from Riverside to help make PPE equipment. We have a senior who comes and picks up the lunches that are not picked up and takes them to a homeless shelter. So everybody is really chipping in here. We have some staff members helping deliver lunches to students who can't pick up their lunches. So I just want to thank everybody for stepping up during this unprecedented times. In regards to the facility, we had some work that was scheduled for late May, early June on the pool. With the closure, we did drain the pool. That work is ongoing, and we will leave the pool drained until further notice when we start to get some clarification from the state. We need to get that back up and running. Also, we had a meeting today with our construction subcontractors for the roof and the gymnastics HVAC system that was scheduled for this summer. In the event, and this is only in the event, should the closure be extended past April 30th, we had a tentative start date of May 27th for that construction work. In the event that school is not open in May, we will move that project up about two weeks and try to get that started sooner so that it's completed before the start of school. Principal Communication, Dr. Freitas and I have discussed, and Dr. Freitas is trying to put out at least twice a week messages to students to keep, make sure they're engaging in some of the virtual activities that are going on via Zoom and Twitter and Instagram, whether it's Virtual Spirit Week. I think this week is Virtual Best Buddies. We did a virtual, he did a virtual coffee with the principal. So Dr. Freitas is trying to keep the communities and families and students engaged and communicate any changes in our schedule that will be announced. One other item in regards to facility, the stadium. We've received mixed reviews. We've received several messages from residents thanking us for keeping that open and providing them an opportunity to use the track and work out. We've received some concerns from families that are concerned that there are large groups of people in the stadium. So we're working closely with the Brookfield Police Department, very similar to how they're handling the parks in Brookfield, and most communities are handling the parks. We locked up all of our athletic equipment. We are leaving the track open so that people can run or walk the track. There are people using the field for exercise. However, this is not a venue to schedule a pickup game of soccer or football or wiffle ball or playing hockey in our tennis courts. If that does occur, the police are in direct communication with me, and we will have to lock down those facilities. So there are a lot of residents, especially residents that live close to the high school that are using this on a regular basis, and I'd ask everybody to please respect social distancing guidelines so that we can keep that facility open for the taxpayers who help pay for it. But I also need you to be responsible. The last thing in the COVID-19 thing that I'd like to touch on is key events, okay? It has not been a fair second semester to our seniors. And Class of 2020, we are going to do everything we can to try to give you the best senior year possible, but some of this is out of our control, and we just need to be patient as we wait for guidance from the state, the governor, and the State Board of Education. We canceled prom that was scheduled for April, I think it was April 24th. That has been canceled. In the event, the social distancing guidelines or large group gathering guidelines loosen up here in the next month or two. We will work. We've already talked with PTO and boosters about trying to pull off an alternative prom. It may need to be at the high school, but we will try to do some type of prom or senior event. Senior awards, the building administration is working on doing a virtual senior awards. We're also working on an athletic, the College Signing Day awards recognition. We're going to try to do that virtually as well. SAT for all juniors, the required SAT test from the state has been waived for this year. Seniors, you took it already last year. If you need to do a paid SAT, you need to check with SAT or ACT in regards to doing an alternative testing date. But the state requirement when we used to give the SAT during the school day has been waived for the class of 2021. AP testing has been moved to online, and that was moved back to later May. So I, please keep in contact with your AP teachers, and Mr. Helgeson has been sending out information. And then lastly, graduation. Again, we've received some emails from parents and families about the concern about graduation. I am doing multiple conference calls with superintendents throughout the state, as well as in West Cook, as well as just high school districts. So we are following a very similar plan to a lot of those districts. We are going to hold tight with our May 22 graduation date. It's either May, it's Friday, May 22. Right now, we're going to hold tight on that and keep our fingers crossed that social distancing guidelines will be relaxed after April 30. If they are not, we will look to schedule an alternative graduation date at some time in June. If the social distancing is not lifted by then, we will have to discuss as a board and the district at what point in time we would move to a virtual event. But again, all of this is fluid, and some of this is out of the individual school district's control. We are thinking about alternative dates. We are thinking about in the event if we had to go to do a virtual graduation, but we are not releasing that information because it would be pointless to tell you, oh, we're changing the date of our graduation, and then the governor comes out with something different. So we're trying to do this in sync with the governor, so by, we should know. I would hope he will make a decision about the April 30 deadline. That last week of April, that would give us four weeks to prepare should we have to keep the graduation at its current date. And if not, if we need to move it, that will give us more than enough time to schedule an alternative date. But we will not be releasing that until we get some further direction from the governor about the April 30th timeline. We are working on things behind the scenes. It's not that we're not paying attention to that, but we need to keep that in mind. We've received some questions about summer school. At this point in time, very similar to graduation, until we get some direction on social distancing in regards to those guidelines, we're not sure what summer school will look like. Will it be a virtual summer school, or will it be an in-person summer school? So that's why we've delayed registration until we get closer to April 30th and we get some more clarification. That same thing will apply to summer camps. We have our summer camp brochure ready to go, but if social distancing is extended through the summer, then we will have to make a decision to probably not run summer camps. But at this point in time, we do not want to put the cart before the horse until we get some more direction from the state. I did receive one request. We are keeping our residency dates currently as scheduled. Those will be released shortly, and we'll begin to send out the online packets. And the first day of school, someone had emailed me about what's the district doing for the first day of school. Again, we're keeping all that as scheduled in the approved calendar the board approved back in January, and we will take this one month at a time as we continue to get updates from the government and from the scientific data. So with that being said, I think we had two hands that were raised. I'd like to go to Gina first, if you want to unmute Gina and ask your question.
Yeah, thank you. First, I would just like to thank all the admin, all the teachers, everybody at RB for doing everything that you guys are to keep kids engaged and learning. I know it is a monumental task, so I'd just like to thank everyone. Is there a plan or what's being done for those students that have not checked in at all?
Great, that's a great question. So we're doing weekly department meetings, and actually, before I came up here today, and Hector, if you want to chime in on this, you can as well, but I, the counselors have been meeting regularly, and today there was a Zoom between social workers, counselors, guidance, and we just got an email from Beth how we're going to start doing some parent, we're going to start a parent phone call bank and start calling parents directly whose kids haven't submitted any assignments. We're also involved in the pair of educators to help us with that. We're going to start back up. We're going to do a virtual small teams, which is where we talk about any students who may be dealing with other issues. But the building administration has been on top of that. That's been a top priority of my meeting agenda. I meet with them every Monday morning via Zoom, and that's something that we talked even with our full faculty about last week at our first virtual faculty meeting about the importance of sending progress reports via Skyward like you normally would in a regular fourth quarter so parents are aware. Reaching out to parents, if you haven't seen any students submit, we're asking teachers to do that as well as the counselors. Dr. Freitas, would you like to add to that?
Yeah, and I just wanted to echo your sentiment, Dr. Skinkes. Our counselors have been reaching out to students, our teachers have been reaching out to students. I myself personally, you know, our commitment to our students is still moving forward. Our teams are still meeting. They're still checking with parents and checking in with students. You know, the only thing that has changed is the platform. Instead of doing it, you know, face-to-face, we're doing it online, but we are still committed to our students. We're following up, you know, I'm doing it as well, but trust in our counselors, our teachers, and our assistant principals, deans, everybody, that we are following up with other students. We're going to move everybody forward and not leave anybody behind.
Yeah, because it's even more, in my view, it's even more than just the learning. Like, we don't know what families are going through, the economic situation. They could have family members that are ill. They could be taking care of younger children, just making sure our students are okay. Like, that's just my concern. So thank you.
All right, we've been, we've been on top of that, and the social workers are doing remote visits with kids. That stuff's been great. I think you saw the emphasis about what I was putting on the e-learning at the beginning of this brief presentation because we do have students, and as you heard in Mr. Baum's visitor comment, not everybody is taking advantage of this opportunity to move forward. And so that's why we were putting a strong effort. That's why I started the report out with that. There's another hand up. Mr. Ruska.
All right, just had to unmute. I just want to thank you for not jumping the gun with dates. I see there are some emails. I know people are anxious. Thank you for assuring people that we're waiting for information. I know the governor is waiting for, you know, best advice, best scientific information, and so we just need to be patient, wait for that. I also want to thank you for keeping the track open. It is an asset. Many of our athletes are crawling the walls. You know, they've had seasons canceled. They're trying to stay in shape for college. They're running. Many, many, many of our residents are using the facilities appropriately, and I really am grateful that that exists for them to use. So thank you.
Yes, thank you. So just a quick comment, and I know we're not supposed to, and I'm not going to respond to Mr. Baum's statement, but I would like to say that I really greatly appreciate the feedback because, you know, as we have just started to engage in a strategic planning effort to try to figure out what it means, what the future of education means, how do we best prepare our students? And, you know, in a school setting, as in our high school, it's basically, we talk about how we, it's our job to prepare our young, our students for life. And all of a sudden, that dress rehearsal, you know, gets changed overnight, and we actually face a situation that is completely new to everyone. So I just want to say that my observation has been that anything from how I've seen students or counselors interact, members of the community, whether they're students themselves or even parents, I mean, there's really almost nothing quite like a crisis that exposes some of the real success stories. And so I would just like to suggest that we also, despite the tragedy and the suffering and so forth, which I'm not trying to downplay, but there's a real opportunity in this in that whenever we say, when we debate whether we should change, you know, the rapidly changing times, whether that should stay in the mission statement or not, it strikes me as almost moot now because we've just been overtaken by the future. And so I really appreciate all the actions that I've seen where people step up to the plate in ways that maybe we weren't even necessarily expecting. And I would love to, as we go forward, even hear more feedback from the community and teachers because I think we're going to be faced with just about every part of education and how much it makes sense. So thank you for participating, to Mr. Baum.
All right. Any further comments on the COVID-19 plan? I think that was pretty comprehensive. Let's move on to 526, the consent agenda. So the consent agenda, I would like to make an amendment to this. To, when we do the consent agenda, To, when we do the consent amendment, to take, to not do, to not include, strike out the registration fees. I'd like to put that on a separate for further discussion and possible vote. Is there any thought about that? All right. So the consent agenda will include the approval of minutes, the auditor contract extension, and the Quest Foods contract extension, A through C.
Ms. Towner, would you like to provide a motion?
I believe, wasn't there a question about the Quest contract?
There was, Kristen.
Can we go over that before I do the motion?
The question submitted was in regards to the commission and how that was impacted this year with COVID-19. So as of March 13th, we had collected $73,200 in the contract. It states $80,000. We were on track to do roughly $97,000 in revenue this year due to commission. So that has been decreased to a little over 70,000.
Okay, thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
I can read the motion. Board of Education Township High School District 20, Cook County, Illinois takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on March 10th, 2020, open and closed. Auditor contract extension, Quest Foods contract extension as presented in the April 14th, 2020 Board Agenda Packet. I need a second.
Second.
All right. This is Sierra seconded, and let's have, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yeah.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
All right, let's go to the registration fees. This is in our packet. What, one of the things we had talked about at the last meeting was kicking out the fee, the registration fee for the third sport. We had talked about it possibly moving to a, and then we went to competitive activities and some other things, I think. What I'd like to open for discussion is a cap. At the, if we do two sports, the first sport's $250, correct me if I'm wrong, and the second sport is $100?
$200 and $150.
$200 and $150. So it would be a $350 cap at activities. I thought this would, A, give a little relief to the families of activity students and also encourage someone who might not do a third sport based on the economics of it, the ability to do that. So my goal would be to raise the activities for the third sport.
So we did receive a question last, for the last meeting. It'd be roughly $3,800. We have roughly 38 students that participate in a third sport, which is a $100 fee. And then someone asked about activities. And there are roughly, there are 23 students there in a combination of three or more activities with a participation fee. So if we eliminated that third fee, that would be about $3,100 from activities and $3,800 from athletics, which are not significant dollar amounts, which we could definitely support. However, I think what we're probably missing, and I think Ms. Salas submitted this question, like, what's the combination of, is there a kid that plays a sport for 200 and does three or two activities where they might even be higher than the third sport athlete? And so that's where Kristen and I went into some discussion yesterday. We would have to go hand by hand to each student to see if they're a combo of one or two sports plus a paid activity. We know they do exist, but there's not an easy way to pull that data. And so if the board wants to see that specific data, we'd have to wait till the next meeting. We have to, they have the athletic administrative assistant and our business office assistant correlate their files to make sure we're giving you an accurate count. But Kristen and I discussed this yesterday and we talked a little bit before the meeting about possibly just implementing a cap of, say, $350 in that no student would be expected to pay, you know, would be capped, whether it's a participation in athletics or participation in activities or the kid that does the combo. Their family would not have to pay more than $350 per student.
Laura, you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I have a couple. So if we didn't do the cap across the board, that could be a significant amount of money, more than what we see on the chart. Because if somebody did two activities and two sports, they would be paying for both of those at $700. If we cap it at $350, that'd be a $350 loss just on that one student. That could be significant because we don't have good data to just say across the board cap, combined athletic activity, I think would be dangerous. If you're saying two-sport cap and a two-activity cap, until we get more information, I would support that with a one-year kind of investigative year, like Governor Quinn did with that property tax. And if it's not a significant hit, we can support it, then we can keep it. But if we find out that there are some nuances that we just didn't realize, that we may have to go back to keeping it. And then my last comment might be, if we could pull up data and look at the activity fees of students, is there anything that flags students who have a higher activity fee than others based on participation in sports and/or activities?
Yes, I think that's what, I think the board, we can't provide information to the board. This is an example of the fees that were up for today. So Kristen does think she would be able to provide a general summary of what the total fees would be if we did a combo. But we're going to need two weeks, I could provide that at the COW. And I think we can, if we can approve the rest of the fees tonight, this does need to go in the handbook. So I could work with Kristen to get you an answer on the overall data. And then we can get back to the athletic fees and activity fees at the COW meeting and take a vote then, once we have more data.
I think Ms. Alice, you had a question?
Thank you. No, I like the intent of this discussion in terms of making sure that our students can participate in all the activities that they may be interested in. My concern is if we are approaching this a bit piecemeal, right? That, you know, we're not looking at all of the fees, we're looking at three-sport athletes, three-competitive activity or three-performance activity athletes. I'm just concerned about taking this as a bit of a one-off exercise, knowing what lies ahead in terms of the budget year for '20 and '21. So my question, and Kevin may have answered it already, is timing. Can we defer this discussion for two weeks to get a slightly more comprehensive view of what we're talking about? Or is there urgency to move forward on it tonight?
I think what's for sure, the athletic and activity, we could wait two weeks to get this out back to you and make a decision at the COW, at the April 28th meeting. In regards to the other registration fees, there were no other questions submitted on that. And I will say this, I know just from speaking to families, not only athletics, but once you add in the class fees, if your kid's taking driver's ed, yearbook, student fees can be $700, $800 per kid, right? So if I'm hearing you clearly, that's more of your concern, like, is we just capping it for kids with activities or athletics? We had not engaged in any discussion about, is there, should there be, should there be a cap for just a general kid who doesn't maybe do multiple sports or activities, but has a huge amount of student fees? I did not engage in that conversation in any form of the year.
No, that's exactly correct. I think as someone who will have three students there next year, those fees are not small. And so I just want to make sure that we're looking at this comprehensively and not with just a piece of our population. So if we can defer this for two weeks, I would appreciate it just to see what is financially feasible in terms of an overall cap on fees of some sort.
I think Gina, you have a question, comment?
Yeah, maybe I heard you wrong. Did you say a cap per family or per student?
It would be...
Per student, right?
Excuse me. The way I understood, I understand it to be is per student. So it would just be on that third sport or performance activity, competitive activity. But I do, I do, I do see the, you know, the value of more information and how this lays down. I mean, I think when you get into, you know, when you get into the third sport, it's kind of a triple dip, right? Is $350 enough to, I mean, sports are inherently expensive. There's buses and referees and equipment and all these things. That is part of what we're, what we're asking the people that use the school to pay for a lot more of the school, right? And I truly believe in that, but I think at some point, you're hindering that activity, which is one of the things that we're here to really strive for kids to do activities. When you have 1,600 kids and only 20 kids are doing it, I wonder where that was 10 years ago, I guess, when there was no fee for it.
And it would be, it would be a large, I wouldn't say undertaking, but I think the dollars we're talking about, when you start talking about class fees and things like that, if you put a cap per kid, I don't know if that data could be fully generated in two weeks. Right? Because some of those fees, some students choose to take seven courses, some students choose to take five. Some students, I mean, a yearbook's like an activity pass, right? That's a purchase. It was, I think the question originally, where my mindset was, was on the athletics and activities. I can see, if I can gather in a short time about a general cap on fees across the board between class and athletic and activity. But originally, when this was set up, it was to help offset the cost of running west community.
Yeah.
It was originally set up to offset the cost of bringing back a lot of the sports and activities that had to be cut due to the financial times the district was going through when I first got here. And so that was one of the ways we helped offset some of those costs and brought things back. So at the end, I will try with, work with Kristen to see if I can give you a better snapshot of that. I will start with the athletic and activity and then we can see if we can go with something further from there.
Thank you.
Laura, you still have your hand up? You're muted, Laura.
I do have a concern because some of the fees are just the fee of being in the classroom. They're tangible, it's what a student uses. And I think maybe those fees should be kind of put in a category, you know, like your lock, your kind of your rental, your, the things that you use, your transcript fee, those are just cost of doing business type fees. And I think those should be not even used in the consideration, kind of like a base fee that every student has to pay. But then there's going to be students who are taking AP classes and they're going to have additional fees. So when we start to look at a cap per student, that AP fee is a lot cheaper than taking a college class a year later. But if we look at that AP class fee and we look at a couple of activities in a sport, yes, that student will have higher fees, but they're also taking advantage of many activities at very fair prices. So, you know, as we start to look at the fees and not kind of lump everything together, but to kind of pull some things out or hold them constant, I think will be important.
Deanna, you still have your hand up?
Oh, it can come down.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, so we'll table this registration fees. Mary Ann, if this could be an item under old business for the April COW. Kristen, if you could pull definitely the athletic and activity data, see if the combo is there. And then we'll see if we can figure out some kind of format to provide a little data analysis. I mean, every student pays the 200, the registration and the tech fee because we provide the Chromebooks. I don't, we can't get into really course fees. So I would think maybe if we just look at these general fees, but I'll see if I could pull something together for you before the COW. Hey, Wes.
All right, so let's move on to old business, action items, now life safety items, capital improvements.
As I previously mentioned, we had a construction call today and we're just waiting to see what the direction is from the state in regards to the closure. If the closure is lifted after April 30th, then we are tentatively starting May 27th. And if the closure is extended, we will up the roof project to hopefully start the week of May 14th.
All right, now we get to talk about the textbook adoptions.
Kylie is joining us tonight, so between Kylie and Hector, I will turn this over to Kylie and Hector. Kylie, you want to turn your video on, are you available?
I'm here. Can everybody hear me?
Welcome, welcome back.
Thank you. You thought you were rid of me. So what you guys have tonight is an update on textbooks. And here's what has changed, which is the reason why we didn't move forward with the adoption process when I submitted for the second read last time, which I kind of expected. Our physics slash AP physics resources, we found out as we were getting closer and closer to the date of approval and signing the contracts, we found out that they were no longer available to us as a purchased resource, that they were available to us only as a rental resource. And so when you looked at the cost for what that would have done for us not to be able to have our own content that in theory we could keep between school years and even wrapping our heads around what that would look like as a rental process, that's not something that we typically do, we weren't comfortable with that resource anymore being available to us in that way. So what we have done since then is our physics teacher, our AP physics teacher, Mark Shadel, is going to continue by getting a license to that resource. So we're talking about the same content that we wanted to have before. And he is going to use summer curriculum hours to develop that content into a more tailored RB student experience using the sample problems and questions, which is really what we were paying for anyway. So we're getting one license instead of spreading that out over our entire physics classes. And then with the regular physics, we are going to continue with the adoption of our tech book, which is what we have used in biology and what we have used in chemistry. So what you're looking at here as an update that has only been changed in the area of physics, you will no longer see a request for AP physics because, as I said, we're going to get Mark Shadel a license and he's going to develop that content from the original resource at a much reduced rate, of course, to us. And you are seeing a change in the cost of the regular physics because we have decided to continue our implementation of our discovery. of our Discovery Education Tech Book in Science. What is nice about this pricing is that they do not offer just the textbook anymore. This is another unique thing with getting online digital resources. They now only offer the tech book as part of an integrated Discovery Education platform experience. So they sort of beef up what they're offering you, whether you want it or not, and that's the only way that you can get it. What they've done for us is they've given us a four-year license at just the tech book cost, which is a significantly reduced rate, so that all of our science offerings, all of our science tech book licenses will line up in terms of expiration date. So we, as a district, will be able to make a decision as a whole if we want to continue Discovery Education programming for science. So that's sort of the rationale behind the change. It only happened in, in the physics AP area and the general physics area. There is no change to English 10. There is no change to Spanish 3. And the change that we made in physics is saving the district $12,900. So that's the difference in the cost proposal. And this is our final, I promise, final textbook proposal from me.
And I did want it to add, I want to thank all the board members because historically, the board has been very supportive of the admin team and the instructional coaches and teachers requesting books, research for our kids, and really backing us up. So I want to thank you for trusting in our expertise and in our collaboration to make sure we have the best resources possible for our students. Also, so all the board members know, these requests are put three years in advance, you know? So for everyone here listed in previous textbooks, this was planned years ago. So it's carefully planned, it is collaborative, and it is what's best for students. And I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Linkwiss, to instructional coaches, and really for the board for always entrusting in us and supporting us when adopting textbooks for our students.
Hey, do we have any questions or thoughts or comments?
You're welcome, Hector and Kylie. We trust your professional judgment.
Thank you. That's appreciated, Mona, very much.
We're good to vote on this tonight, then Kylie? Thumbs up? Okay, there's no discussion, Wes.
Okay, if there's no, no further discussion, then Ramona, you want to read the...
Sure, I can read the motion. "The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, hereby approves the adoption of the following textbooks for the 2020, 2021 school year. Foundations of Language and Literature, Bedford..." Oh, God. "Bedford, Freeman and Worth, Copyright 2019. Discovery Education Tech Book, Discovery Education, Copyright 2019. Entrez Culturas, Three Wayside Publishing, Copyright 2016, as presented in the April 14, 2020 Board Agenda Packet."
Second?
Second.
Tom, Mr. Jacobs? All right. Mary Ann, this is a roll call vote.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Alis?
Yes.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Smithing?
Yes. All right, we'll move to new business.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Bye Kylie, thanks for coming.
Thank you. Be careful going home.
Bye Kylie, thank you for joining us today.
That was a good one. All right, payment of bills.
We did receive a few questions. Kristen?
The first two questions were related to purchasing non-capital items. So one was on page 63, referring to computers, and the other was on Board Book page 66, referring to lamps and tables. All of these items were purchased out of non-capital accounts or supply accounts because each item was less than the capital threshold, which is outlined in our board policy. So we go by the individual items, not the total bill that's going to the vendor. Board Book page 73, there's a question in regards to Business Solver. We do pay our insurance cooperative for the ACA reporting, for the printing specifically, and then mailing them directly to the employees. Not every district takes advantage of the printing, and it comes out to be, really, you're just paying for the postage. And so we've paid for that for the past couple of years. The last question on, on bills was Board Book page 105, the Village of Riverside. We are paying our portion of the police radios tonight. There was a question in regards to an update on the project. The project is about a six-week, six-week lead time. So right now, we're in the process of waiting for the vendor to come back out and do a site visit to make sure that they view the site in which they're going to install it one more time, and we hope to have the project done by the end of May or early June. And that was it for board questions.
From Deanna?
Yep, thank you.
Are we ready to pay these bills?
So Deanna didn't, didn't have a question?
No, I did. I was, I was thinking, thanking Kristen for those comments. On Business Solver, if we could just talk about that offline, I'm surprised it's not run through the co-op.
Yeah, happy, happy to discuss that further.
Okay. "The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented in the April 14, 2020 Board Agenda Packet." Second?
Second.
All right, this is, Ms. Sierra seconded. This is roll call.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yeah.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Alis?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes. All right, so, so do the Press Policy, issue 103.
This is recently submitted, so we include it in the board packet so the board members have time to read it for at least two meetings. I will work with Ms. Sierra and Ms. Ruska to see if we can do a Zoom to discuss it. I have to be honest with you, my time has been dedicated a little bit more to handling all this stuff with COVID. So I briefly looked at it yesterday, and I don't think, I thought it was only about 50 pages. Most of it were exhibits, which the board don't need, does not need to approve. So I'll do another review and see if we can get a Zoom together before April 28.
All right, any, no comments, raised hands? Life Touch contract extension?
This is our yearbook contract. Kristen, you want to provide a little background?
This is our photography provider, which then ultimately goes into the yearbook. It's set to expire at the end of this school year. Life Touch has been the district's photographer since 2017. Back then, we had tried to receive several quotes, and really, there are not many people that are in this business and that also meet our needs. We reached out to Jostens, who does the district's yearbook, and they cannot meet the photography needs as they don't print student IDs, which is also a component of this. The administration also met with VIP, who does the athletic photos. Initially, they did not submit a proposal, but as of yesterday, I did receive a proposal. We met with them six weeks ago, and they just submitted theirs. I will say, I will certainly include that in the board packet next time in order to be transparent. But we did have several concerns with their proposal that they submitted, as well as the cost. It would certainly increase costs to our families. But I will include that in the next read of this so that you can all see it as well. The contract really is a revenue generator for the district, not a big revenue generator. We receive anywhere from about $1,000 to $1,500 in revenue each year, and that goes to the yearbook students and to help offset the cost for the yearbook and for the yearbook students to use that for the production of the yearbook as well. We have had the legal counsel review it for the district, and they are okay with the Life Touch contract as well. Again, this is just a first read for tonight.
Good. Laura, you had a question, comment?
Yeah. So is there another option, Kristen? If this is expensive or they don't like it, is there another vendor?
Oh, well, we're really satisfied with Life Touch. We feel like it's, they've been very, they've been great. You know, the VIP was the one that we had some concerns with, and that is not included in the packet tonight. They do the athletic photos, and they do a good job with that. But we don't feel like they would necessarily be the best fit after reviewing their proposal in the last two days.
So what I would suggest is if the board members have any concerns or questions, to please submit those for the COW. And unless there is any concern or issues, Mary Ann, can we add this to the consent agenda during the COW?
All right, matters for closed session. Personnel, student discipline, individual student matters, sale, lease property, pending or intimate litigation, collective negotiation, and school safety. There's no visitors here. Consideration of items for future meetings. Anyone have any considerations? Let's see, no hands raised? Then, all right, we'll get to, go into closed session.
Here I come, sorry. "The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety." Second?
All right, we'll get to Ms. Alice, and we'll do a vote. Mary Ann?
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Alis?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yeah.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes.
Okay, so it is approximately 8:13, if you look at your computer. I don't know if your clock's visible or not. But what I'd like to do at this time, we need to do a few things. Do not log out. This will conclude our live portion that will be streamed on YouTube.